I would like to draw the May twenty fourth meeting to order at seven thirteen and please rise for the pleasure.
So tonight we have a very special opportunity to recognize two very special students. And it's not only the Board of Ed who actually will be recognizing them. We were you were given actual state proclamations that you can hang these on your wall and keep them for perpetuity. And show everybody how cool you are. And when you go to college, you can hang them on your college door. But we have, you know, I'm going to read a bio for each of our wonderful valedictorian and celebrant. And then I'll read the Connecticut General Assembly. Statements for each. Okay. And then as I read them, just to know they're about you. And then I will bring them over to you and award them too. So it's it's wonderful to have you here. Wonderful to have family here tonight. Maybe once we introduce them, they can introduce their family too.
Perfect. And then we will also make sure that you guys get your pictures with the little emblem in the back will all move out of the way. A nice picture to go next to that.
And then your scrapbooks, you can show your kids how awesome you were. So let me start with just introductions and then as I introduce each, you should fan others. I'll start with Jacqueline first. Jacqueline Sterling is our celebratory. Celebratory Jacqueline began high school on fast track, starting with the highest level courses available. Is a freshman earning all As in the highest courses, which is not easy to do, as many of you know. She continued to challenge herself by taking New York Biology, honors chemistry, AP English three. This year she's enrolled in four AP courses and Yukon Environmental Science. Over the years, she's received academic excellent award awards for intro to business, world, world history, marketing, Spanish three, criminology. She's an active member for the National Honor Society and for the National Spanish Honor Society. Jacqueline, also known as Jackie, is also the president of DECA. Where she has been recognized nationally, earning first place awards at the regional DECA competitions. In addition, she is a link crew leader, yearbook committee member, kindness campaign member and senior class president. She also volunteers to help students prepare for final exams and likes to write for the high school newspaper. Jackie was the captain of the girls varsity soccer team and has earned numerous awards, including the Connecticut Association of School Scholar Athlete Award for THS. She is known to be polite, respectful, mature, friendly and a responsible young lady. Plans to continue her education and would like to become a lawyer. So shake, shake. Give her some advice about being a lawyer, right?
Sure.
So congratulations, Jacqueline. Jackie. Okay, Jackie, who's with you here today?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here tonight. I have my father, Mr. Sterling, and then Mrs. Sterling is my mother.
All right, well, I'll give Eric, give Eric his kudos, and then I'll read the general assembly statement. So Eric Ekblum is here, who's the valedictorian. Eric consistently performs at a high level in an extremely rigorous curriculum. He will graduate having completed nine honors and six advanced placement courses, along with Yukon Biology one and two, which is absolutely no easy feat at all. The kids have taken that really hard. He is a member of the National Honor Society, has earned high honor roll every semester. He received the academic excellent award excellence awards for honors, English, biology, AP English three, jazz band, in addition to receiving the Vow Shunlong Honorary Science Award in 2022. He is also a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program and recently received recognition for the U.S. Presidential Scholar Program. Eric is also an active member of the Astronomical Society of Greater Hartford. Oh, hey, are you going to that thing this coming Saturday? Unfortunately, no. And a member of our Technology Student Association and is an intern with our IT department, which is probably why everything is working this year. Outside of school, he enjoys being a counselor in the summer camp in New Hampshire, directing group activities, lifeguarding and teaching sailing. He is also involved with the Boy Scouts of America, where he most recently achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, which is also extremely difficult and prestigious. Eric is a member of the tennis team and has also earned the Scholar Athlete Award from the Connecticut Association of Schools. And Eric is truly an outstanding young man motivated by a love for learning and a natural curiosity. He plans to continue his education and pursue a career in naval architecture and or marine engineering. Please join me in congratulating Eric as well. Eric, what's new tonight?
Thank you. I'm here with my father, Brian Ekblum, and my mother, Karen Ekblum.
Well, welcome, welcome, welcome. So tonight, from the Connecticut Assembly, General Assembly, from Representative Tammy Nutio from the fifty third, Representative Tim Ackert from eighth district and Senator Jeff Gordon from the thirty fifth district. They bestowed this official citation from the Connecticut State Assembly on both of you. And it says, be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to. In recognition of being named high school valedictorian and excluditorian and presidential candidate in the Department of Education, we commend you for your extraordinary academic achievements, as well as for your participation and leadership in extracurricular activities. Your dedication and hard work have distinguished you as one of the brightest students to pass through Collins Hall. Congratulations and best wishes in your future endeavors. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given on this twenty fourth day of May, twenty twenty three, at the state Capitol in Hartford, Connecticut, and it's signed by each of your representatives. So congratulations. Let me give you these and shake your hands. Do your official big ones and it's something to frame. Would you guys like to say? This is your chance to change the world.
I just want to say thank you. It's great to have all of our hard work recognized. And I really appreciate you guys inviting us here today, saying this, bringing us these. It means the world to us. I mean, we both worked really hard and we couldn't be more grateful. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, everything that Eric said, I'm really appreciative of all the opportunities Colin has given me throughout these years, whether it's DECA, sports, things that sort, I mean, anything and everything I could have imagined accomplishing, I did. So I just want to say thank you for that and thank you for really pushing forward and working on.
Certainly natural leaders here, right? How about we get a picture of the families up here?
So sometimes if you're feeling comfortable with it, maybe the.
I would just go right in here.
But it's perfect for naval. One, two, three, cheese. That's great. Congratulations again. My wife feels very terrible for wrong with pictures. One, two, three, cheese. I'll send those to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Like I said, I think he was a tennis player, but there he has a javelot, he too, tired, he an athlete and all his others. Incredible. Congratulations.
Now, this was meant to be an honor and not a punishment.
Thank you for having me.
Hey, let's jump back in. You're not changing anything in the agenda tonight. Let's go ahead and I want to take an emotion to approve the new ten minutes.
Jake and Mari have moved to approve the May ten minutes.
Any discussion about those? Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and just do the roll call and vote in. So go ahead. Sylvia?
Hi. Everything.
Hi.
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 Jen?
Hi.
So if you are online and you need to, it's just the, this is me and. And we do maintain, which is, please, we need. Okay, I see. And we don't change. Those files. Well, if you can see this screen and we. Michelle, give us a thumbs up beginning this.
I just heard you say that, Ashley, but I can't hear anything else.
Go ahead, Tony, you talk, because he just messed with the wires.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, I think a little better now.
No, as I was saying briefly, the particular interest in this special introduction around was being able to sit and listen to the kids during that, that, that group, you know, and what they found were particularly interesting and, you know, how we do better and how we, you know, how we can improve what's already a wonderful thing. So please pass on to the administration, all the teachers that let us come in class and all the students, how much that really was beneficial and my appreciation.
And I know they appreciated having you. So it was great. Thank you. Thank you to the board for participating in these because it does. They do a lot of work to set them up. So it was great to have, to have you there.
Yeah, very sad to miss this one, but I was at Callan Green Day the day before. So I was with, you know, eight third graders all day long.
You know, one of the teachers, normally we go in and we, you know, we observe what we're doing. There was one of them, forgive me, I forgot her name, but actually had us participate. So we had to fill out the worksheet and, you know, talk in front of the class. It was neat.
Anyone else at this time? Jen? Nope. Okay. And let's go to student rooms.
Okay, to begin, I know this past weekend, there was the cornhole tournament where I know the winning group won a cornhole with the Tolan emblem engraved in it, which is pretty cool. And I heard it was pretty successful.
Officer elections happened just yesterday, the speeches. The results for every class except sophomore class will be announced on Friday, but only one person ran for each position in the sophomore class. So next year, officers will be President Juliette Carey, Vice President Ashby Shaw, Treasurer Therapulin and Secretary Maren Millington. So great job to them. And we will get the results for the rest of the classes on Friday.
We haven't been here for a while, but I think it was three Fridays ago was probably.
Three hours down for everyone.
Okay, yeah. It was perfect weather. It was fantastic because all week it was raining and then that Friday was great weather. It was perfect. I heard the food was great. I heard the DJ was great and the venue was great. So that was.
You know, maybe put it for Aqua Turk next year so I can get that. Um, so more on elections, student council elections happened on Monday. And we are still waiting for two results, the president and vice president, which is between Mira and Alyssa Castagna. So one of them will be president and one will be vice president. But treasurer is Gabby, Gabby Bridgewater. Secretary will be Lily Brody. PR rep will be Juliette Carey and Board of Ed reps will be Therapulin and Audrey McCallan. So you're stuck with me.
Majority of sports seasons are coming to an end. I know today was both boys tennis and girls tennis last match. And tomorrow, girls tennis is hosting a clinic for the middle schoolers to help get more middle school girls to join tennis because due to COVID, we're running out of members. And I also know that boys varsity baseball was playing actually at the Yard Goats today, which is pretty exciting stuff. And I think track and softball are still coming to an end soon.
And finally, DECA is hosting a fundraiser for the World Wildlife Foundation. It is ending on Friday and currently very successful with a goal of $1,000. We have currently raised $867.87. What you do for this is there are teams, they each get an animal and they get a teacher to sponsor the animal. And they make ads for the morning announcements and then it's kind of a competition to see who raises the most money. So right now, the whale shark is in the lead with Miss Petuans. They have raised $140 and they have surpassed the limit of one, not the limit, the goal of 125. In second place is the polar bear, which is sponsored by Miss Ross and the students running it are me, Mira and Austria. We've raised $150 and in third place, the capybara, which is Miss Marshall, they have raised $82 and zero cents. So we have two more days. Please donate, tell your friends to donate, tell your kids to donate, Miss Lunden. And I'm very excited. This is going great.
There's a link in the tall and DECA Instagram page. If you, it's easier to donate. You can donate from there.
Yeah.
What is capybara?
A capybara is the world's largest, largest red ant.
Like a gerbil.
What's it? I'm sorry. What's it called?
Capybara, capybara, however you want to say it.
Um, question can be presented now.
They're very cute.
Where my money's going.
The polar bears, right?
Oh, yes. A giant hair.
Okay, um, I will be leaving now and that Mira will be leaving now too. Some people don't understand what end of the year means, though I have a lot of work. But it's been delightful being here and I'll see you all next time.
Thank you, ladies. Good luck, because I probably won't see you. Then if we don't have a meeting for a couple of weeks, it's probably the week of finals.
It's that final schedule, like. They really go on all day, but the high school has all the exams.
Wednesday, Thursday.
I think it's Wednesday, Thursday.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I guess we'll go to green skies.
All right. So tonight we do have. So tonight we have Adam Taff joining us again, Matt Renelli, you know, Adam from Titan Gen. Matt Renelli is our attorney from Schiffman, who's also helping negotiate the process with Green Skies. I did receive the latest update, which I shared with the board, PPA and the license agreement. It is not going to be the final one, but I did share that most recent one with you. So the board does have that to review, given it isn't final. It's not really something already publishing yet. Because that's not the one we're signing, but ultimately, you know, it's there for you to review. I don't know if, at this point, Matt, can you hear me? We're having some trouble.
Yes, I can hear you. Well. Well, Walter, I would say I could hear you. I said that it got worse.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, Dr. Will. Yeah, I'm having the same issue too. It trailed off at the end.
Basically, hi, and tell us how it's going.
Oh, yeah. Okay, better, better now. Matt, I probably have less of an update. You want me to go first?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. So we are still waiting on the NRES awards. Basically, what happened is a developer got disqualified from the program for reasons that they didn't agree with. So they filed a motion with PURA and that issue is being worked out with PURA. I've talked to virtually everybody I know in the industry, from the Connecticut Green Bank to other solar developers, other consultants. And nobody knows for sure exactly when Eversource is going to be allowed to release the results. So I know that's not the most helpful. But, you know, it's the reality unfortunately that we're working with right now. So, you know, it theoretically could be tomorrow. It could be two weeks from now. I'm just really not sure. So that's where things stand from an NRES perspective. There aren't any additional updates related to the projects or anything from the Green Skies team, as far as I'm aware. I think we're really just in the contract negotiation phase at this point.
Yep. Thanks. Thanks, Adam. And so I'll, I'll pick up where Adam left off. So we've, we've had, I mean, the delay in issuing the awards has been in some ways helpful to us, mostly on the license side. The PPA agreement is, I would say, in its near final form. It's a, you know, much more common document and we've exchanged it a couple of times with Green Skies. And I think the version that Dr. Willett provided is, you know, is, is pretty much where it's going to end up. I mean, we reached the endpoint of things that we were asking for and they were willing to give. So if the awards were announced, those, I think we would be in a, in good shape to finalize those. Assuming the, the, the board would approve, you know, vote on them, but, but you'd be in a position to vote. The license is, I would say, not as far along. It was not a document, Green Skies sort of had a stock document for. It's a relatively new type of program. It's only in the second year. We've probably gone back and forth four times in the last 30 days on that document. Green Skies has that in their possession and they are hopefully giving us a clean copy, you know, any day now, which I think will be relatively, again, near the endpoint of, of things we've asked for and things they're willing to give. Just a little bit behind the PPA. So hopefully we'll get a few more days, Grace, from getting the NRES award, but once it comes out, as, as we've indicated earlier in other meetings, we'll have 10 business days, once the award comes out to to enter into the tariff agreement that goes along with the award. But as part of entering into that tariff agreement, we want to also be in a position to enter into the license and the PPAs. So again, I think we'll be in a position to do that. The one wild card is the town will also need to sign off on, in particular, the license, because they are the beneficial, they are the owners, the owners of the property. And so that's going to be, you know, and is somewhat in the hands of the town attorney. We've had some discussions with the town attorney. He had some questions. And we're trying to set up another call to hopefully understand, you know, what, if anything, he needs at this point, other than, other than an updated copy of the agreement from Green Skies.
I do have a question. Um, in terms of the town, has a discussion taken place about if there are additional funds, where those funds are going to go?
Yeah, I can answer that. From where it looks like it's landing is because of the way our energy agreement works, the money would be ultimately savings that would be deposited in the UISF. And it would be used for capital expenses for energy for the, you know, there is a board side use of and a town side use of presumably, you know, these are the efforts of the board, it would be put in the board side of UISF.
We talked about this a little at FFC, not comfortable with that. I think we mentioned that because this is a 20 year commitment and I have a very hard time when we have savings. That's great. That's going to the UISF. But what we talked about in FFC was what happens when we don't have savings, we go over. So my concern, and Tony and I had talked about this with Dr. Willett last week, will the town be willing to let us pull money out of the UISF when we have a shortfall? Because otherwise we are going to have to absorb that in our operating budget. So I don't feel comfortable moving forward with this until we can get an agreement with the town that yes, if we have a shortfall, fall, we can pull it out of the UISF. I, you know, this whole project I still am hesitant about, especially with a 20 year commitment, because we just don't know what's going to happen in five, 10, 15 years down the line. So I don't think I can even get behind the whole project until we at least resolve that about the UISF with the town.
No, and those are definitely thoughts that come through my mind, because the geothermal, we're still paying on it and it was not even necessarily a successful project. So I'm, you know.
I hear you loud and clear.
Sort of along the same lines, more of a procedure question though. Because nothing has been agreed to as of May twenty four, seven forty two PM, we don't have a meeting. When's our next meeting? Fourteen, fourteen. So if this were to be accepted within the next X amount of days, whatever it is, we would have to set up another. Another suspension to get that passed, right? Another session to get that passed, right?
Correct.
Um, so, I, I, I think I would agree, sort of a written agreement as well, I mean, not just a conversation between the board and town council. There's multiple examples where a written agreement needs to be made.
Correct.
Um, before something like this moves forward, so, uh, yeah, that's sort of where I'm at, but you're welcome.
I think the trip agreed.
Hmm, yeah.
That was a thing.
You had something.
You basically asked my question, so, yeah, no, but, yeah.
We just, we also did really look at the UISF agreement, which, right, Tony and Dr. Willett refreshed my memory. It said we're supposed to look at that once a year, and it's been like a decade since we've looked at that or something, so I, you know.
It's supposed to review.
Yeah.
It's been a standing document for a while, that we, you know, yeah, both sides have not reviewed it sometimes.
So I, I feel like we probably need to, if this solar is going to move forward, we probably need to update the entire UISF agreement. But again, you know, talking, you know, even Jane's point, um, if we have to make a decision in ten days with a special meeting, it's gonna be a little difficult to, to get the UISF agreement updated and, and all that, so, you know.
I definitely think that this board, as a whole, would definitely like to see written agreements about, like exactly what you said about where the money goes for the town savings into the, if, you know, there's been many projects that we've been been pushed along onto the board side and we kind of need to protect what we can, given that our budget, even with that with the health insurance, we didn't really get help on that, so it, it, I, yeah.
So, it is something we could approach on the, on the leadership side, like you just did. And saying, hey, we said that, can we have this conversation for the very, you know, if things have to move very quickly, as, as Jayden said, you know, a commitment from them to work on it might make a little bit. But certainly we have to do something regardless, we're supposed to look at it annually, and this may be a perfect reason for us not only to look at it, but to jump it in review and tweak it even.
Oh. Well, you almost, you have two things, maybe, and I was thinking about this in South FC, and it makes sense that um, you know, that there'd be some questions about it and some thoughts about it based on the history of the whole thing, um. But you almost have two different issues here, you have, that they do come together, kind of like a Venn diagram in a way, but they're too different in some other ways. For instance, Yusuf, whether you can use Yusuf or not in a, in a deficit status, you know, where we need to make up some hole, that, that would need to be negotiated for Yusuf anyway, you know, that's something that probably should, when we review Yusuf, we talked about regardless of the status of the solar agreement. The solar agreement, may want to be looking at the solar agreement merits, whether you feel like it's a good deal or not for the town and the district. Um, you know, whether you feel like there would be savings and that type of thing, an offset to energy, that type of thing, because you're gonna wanna talk to the town about Yusuf anyway. But with respect to the energy agreement, this may be, you know, a shot that you have setting the energy costs for the future, so evaluating the competitiveness of this agreement, you know, may be a separate bifurcated thing from looking at Yusuf, even though they, they are. Because if you're looking at renegotiating Yusuf, this thing may be over now.
Yeah.
Because it takes some time to renegotiate Yusuf.
And Wal- Walter, could I, could I just jump in, I don't know, I haven't looked at the Yusuf agreement, but just to, maybe to clarify a little, I think that part of the discussion only applies to the front of the meter projects, if correct, that, that the, the behind the meter projects are PPAs, so tho- there's not gonna be any fund, any money going into a fund for those, uh, projects, correct, Adam?
Yeah, that's exactly right, so those would function simply just to lower your, your energy bills over time.
Right, so it's just the two front of the meter projects that would be, I think, part of the discussion of where, where does the money reside and, and how can it be used?
Yeah.
Um, if that helps narrow.
It may still be subject to Yusuf for us though, because if we transfer our entire energy budget over at the beginning.
Okay.
And so that, that money goes out of the board's budget and into the town side at the, at the onset of every year. So that's why it still may be, there's still for consideration.
Okay.
Uh, but in any case, you know, I think the merits of what we do with Yusuf, that is something the board and the town should be discussing regardless. The, the merits of the solar agreement, whether this makes, you know, sense for, for town and the board as a good deal uh, that can help us, you know, is get a higher capital amount, so we can expend it on things, saying boilers and everything else that blow up. Um, you know, that, that's what you're really looking at here, probably, from the standpoint of its, its value to the town and the board's operations.
Anyone else to sign? Okay, so, we'll wrap that up, um, thank you very much for coming. And if we have any other further questions about this, I guess we will reach out with them, but as of right now, it's we've spent a lot of time on this, and yeah, we don't even know that we are in the run, so. I'm, I'm good, anyone else? We're all good? Okay, so thank you very much, um, for the update, and let's move on to our.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Adam, we appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, tonight we have the great honor of having Barbara Daly, Dr. Seer, and she is our ELA supervisor, and uh, in my opinion, the best, the best ELA person I've ever met in my entire career, she's incredibly, incredibly informative. She helps me understand everything about reading programs, actually helps me understand everything about everything in general, thank her. Has a great deal of wisdom, does the wit and wisdom program, she is down for the district. Um, and tonight we have this great opportunity to have Barbara give a presentation for us on the ELA.
Thank you.
And I'll run the, uh, the slides, if you talk to it, I'll just move on, you can say ding, beep, or hey, can you move it?
Okay, hi, everybody. Hi. Good to see you all, those kids are tough actors. Incredible overachievers, um, so do you want me to sit, stand? Doesn't matter.
You can come here, but.
Uh, okay, thanks.
And wherever you go, then I will follow.
Oh, is that, you know, sachet, you know. Well, thanks for having me, uh, and some of you, uh, recently done an instructional walkthrough, so you've probably heard some of this in the not so distant past, uh, so thank you for listening again, and thank you, Walt, for that very, very warm welcome. Um, it certainly is very much appreciated, um, as Walt said, um, you know, I am the supervisor of literacy for the district. I've been here since twenty sixteen, but during the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, I was Tom Swanson's assistant principal at Birch Grove. And then moved into this role in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, and has been, and I have been in this role for, since that time. Um, I do have certifications in reading and language arts, where I spent the bulk of my career as building-based reading consultant, working with students that have difficulty learning to read, uh, classroom teacher and administrator, and I do keep all of those up and current, so that if anything happens, I'm good, I can go back into becoming a reading teacher here in Tallinn, you know. But, um, and I've been teaching for really quite a long time, so, um, I've been doing this for uh, thirty-five years, I think, so really a long time. I've had, gotten to see a lot of things come and go, um, but I think some of the new initiatives that are happening right now in literacy are, are really uh, very, very exciting, and we're kind of on a, a cool precipice of, uh, 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 just great things happening, so I, I'd love, I'm happy to share these with you. Um, the first page, uh, sorry, yeah, the first page is just an adroit glance page, but we'll go into detail about some of the things that are happening across the district. Um, and so that just kind of goes through, I won't even spend any time on this slide, so if you want to move forward, Walt, that's fine, thanks. So one thing to know is that we follow for all our curriculum design, understanding by design, which is that type of curriculum model of always thinking about where you want to get the kids. So the end in mind, where do I have to get you by the end of twelfth grade, by the end of second grade, by the end of third grade, and planning that way, it's that backward design. It focuses on curriculum and student and teacher understanding, and that transfer of learning into real-life applications for career and, uh, college readiness, um, and it is something that we've been embarking on, I guess, four years ago, it was pre-COVID, um, that we started, you know, some of you were a part of that big committee, uh, several years ago. So that, I just wanted to make sure that we mention that, and all of that, all of that that we do is in service of the portrait of the graduate. What we want our children that are graduating to be able to do and to move out into the world with these skills. Okay. Thank you, I think it's also very important to note that right now, um, the State Board of Education, uh, in ELA specifically, is, uh, really dictating quite a lot. Um, they have established what's called the Center of Literacy Research and Reading Success, there's a whole host of reasons of behind this uh, that I can go into for you if you're interested, but it is very important to note that the State Department of Ed, uh, has started to mandate various teaching methodologies, instructional routines, and materials that are all aligned to the site, what's called the science of reading. Um, and this term means teaching with intentionality, explicitness, and following decades worth of research uh, that is now kind of coming to the fore. Uh, we are aligned with the science of reading, we've been very lucky to be aligned from the outset, which puts us at an advantage from some other districts, which is good. Um, and we do use evidence-based explicit instruction, all in accordance with the state guidelines. Uh, we also have been so fortunate to have a group of teachers getting trained on what's called letters, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And really, we have to think about that, a lot of teachers, um, due to no fault of their own, were not necessarily trained in their teacher preparation programs to be able to implement what's called the science of reading, but through letters, they're learning all of this uh, knowledge, which has been great, and I've had the opportunity to seek feedback from our participants and to a person, they all have said that it has been the best professional development that they've had. Um, so that's, I'm just thrilled that we've been able to do that, and it really does line us up, put us further in alignment with the state, so that's really great. Um, we have had a committee this whole year, working on meeting the criteria set forth by the Connecticut Right to Read legis- there's actual legislation behind all this, Connecticut Right to Read legislation, we have submitted our, um, waiver to the state, our application to the state, we have to submit a very lengthy application, Dr. Willett and I spent quite a lot of time on that. Um, it's very lengthy, and we are just, um, awaiting approval. But some of the things that we have in place that are really, like I said, positioning us well, we already have foundations, some of you may remember that if you did the instructional walkthroughs with that, us, we have that from pre-K to grade three, which is a very systematic word work, uh, which is aligned, we have Hegarty, which is all just oral, kind of rhyming play, if you will, and, uh, we have books that are called decodable, which are books that are easy for very young children to be able to read. So that, all of that is now required by the state, and we already had it, so that's, so that's a great thing, we're, we're very fortunate for that.
And that's a credit to Ms. Daily Burns, she really helped us stay really on the razor's edge of all of this for many, many years, and many districts were in arrears and behind in getting the waiver and other things submitted because of Ms. Daily Burns, we were right on top. She, she owed all the credits to her for keeping us, you know, in the right place on the side of the state, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and luckily I get along well with, uh, the leader of the Center for Literacy, so she does, we have a lovely uh, rapport, so she does write right back when I send her an email, she's quick to respond and always, oh, good to hear from you, what's, you know, so I, that, hey. Whatever it takes, you know, whatever it takes, so I'm, I'm thrilled for that, thank you, yep, thank you, so, um, I obviously, I think a lot of you know that we collect universal screening data, and that is, again, a requirement. Uh, we use dyna- uh, what's called that dynamic indicators of early reading skills, you might hear, it's called Dibbles for short, everybody just calls it Dibbles. Uh, the teachers do collect universal data three times a year for me, as mandated, um, but also just good practice. And then obviously, they collect and analyze data far more frequently on individual students as they see, as they see that they may need. And where they use that data to inform their instruction. Um, as you may have noticed, that our screening data is really K-eight universal screening, it really aren't any high school types of universal screenings out there, I have investigated that, and it's just not something that really exists. If a student is still struggling to read by the time they get into high school, they're usually a known entity, and we have other systems in place to support that student. Um, so the universal screening data is used to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all the kids, and so if we see somebody is lacking in a skill, we can pull them into intervention, give them the support they need, and, and set them up, and set them free, if you will, from intervention. Uh, so we use that data very, very, very diagnostically, and we do all look at it across the district. Teachers, administrators, um, all of us look at it very, uh, frequently. And, uh, we also have, I just wanted to mention this fire, which we, Patty Hess and I, the Director of Special Education, we found this several years ago, an outgrowth of our dyslexia, um, task force that we had. Again, kind of putting us a little bit ahead of what the state was mandating, we've had that for five years now. So that put us in, in good stand, and that stands for specialized program, individualizing reading excellence, again, it's to help kids that struggle, it's only for the kids that are in intervention, or that may be designated as a student with a reading disability. Um, so we offer that as an additional support to get that student to where they need to be. And we have been incorporating, we're new, our new little thing that we've been checking, kind of checking out, it's called structured word inquiry, and it's really cool if you're interested, uh, like, so anybody know why we spell have with an E on the end, we don't say heyve?
Mean can king.
Anybody want to get, yes. It's honestly just because no word in English ends in a V. So love, have, uh, all the, those words all are spelled that way, simply because of that. And why is that? Because so many years ago, the scribes who were the only literate people couldn't get the ink to not grip in a way that made it illegible. So you can see I kind of geek out on this stuff, I find that really cool, so, so. So that, you know, what, structured word inquiry gets into etymology, and morphology, um, so that's just a neat thing we've been dabbling with as well, well, neat for me, but anyway, um, so, so if you wouldn't mind switching, uh, just a little bit more about foundations, if you have young children, um, here in Tallinn, you, you've seen them, I know, Tony, we've talked about it, your daughter does that, and tap it out, tap it out, yeah, they, they're very good at that. So Foundations, um, makes learning to read fun while laying the groundwork for lifelong literacy, it's one of the resources that we have that has proven to be extremely effective for us. So effective, in fact, that our first year of implementation, uh, Foundations is published by Wilson, they wanted to, they wanted to use, you may recall, Dr. Willett, they wanted to use our data and use us as like a, a model of how, how much impact it had. Um, and so that, that's really pretty cool too, and it's a basic skills program that teaches letters, sounds, various spelling patterns used, like I said, pre-K to three. Uh, we, we don't use it beyond third grade, nor does it go beyond third grade, uh, but it incorporates all those foundational skills that are needed, and that now the state is dictating. Um, and it meets our state standards for explicit systematic instruction for teaching foundational skills, so if you see your child tapping cat, that's what that is, so it's a great program, um, would you mind switching? Thanks. Uh, but we were also able to get the Hegarty, which is really, that's just oral language, it's just a, it's a, it it might be something like this, say rainbow.
Rainbow.
Thank you, now say rainbow without the rain. Believe it or not, that is a skill that some kids struggle with, there's nothing written, it's all oral, and it's that phon- it's, uh, the, you go from the gross, the big, the syllable level, down to the smaller level, say cat. Now say cat without the c. There you go, so that's all that is, it's playing with words, that's, um, and the kids love it, sorry. I, I'm sorry, a little demonstration. So it's a lot of fun, it's tier one, uh, it's a ten-minute quick little rhyming type of activity, just like that. Um, and it's a supplemental resource we have, that teaches those phonological skills that really are the cornerstone to being able to read. We just do it so, so quickly as adults that we don't even realize that, you know, we're doing all these things, because our brains are are able to do that, but you have to remember, for a little kid, they, they have to be able to do all those things, but whatever, every word wants to be a sight word, right? We don't have to decode many words, do we? But little kids do have to learn how to do that, so I'm gonna fill out all my weird little jargon. Okay, um, along with the Hegarty, thank you, you can switch, um, we have G, it's called Geodes, and they're decodable readers, so I'm focusing a lot on the early grades right now, because that's really where the state is putting a lot of, uh, eggs in their basket at this level, so they call this Geodes, because if you open a Geode rock, there's a, a little treasure inside. And when you open the treasure of a book, if you open a book, there's a treasure inside, you get, you get to learn all these neat things. So these are decodable, which means that they are specifically correlated to foundations and the skills that the children have been taught. So if they've learned law, short A, there's going to be a preponderance of short A words in that book and not a word like house, where they, a little kid, that's a hard word. They won't be able to necessarily read that word. So we've been able to provide that um last, last year. Yeah, last year. So they've been great, and they teach, and we only, we have one set per grade, for two. And they've been very, very popular, and the kids love them, and they're nonfiction. Many of them are nonfiction, which, again, Geo, they can sign, social study. So they're also building knowledge while they're reading. These books are at their level and they can access. So we've been really lucky to have those. Um so thank you for that. Along with that, we have the Flyleaf. You can switch up. Thanks. And those ones um are also decodable that we originally bought for special education and intervention uh teachers back. Again, this was an outgrowth of our dyslexia task force that we had several years ago, probably about five years ago. And they also provide uh a really systematic way of accessing print for kids that struggle. Um so they're a great resource, and I'm, I'm thrilled that we're able to have those. Um and one outgrowth of our Connecticut Right to Read Committee is that we don't have these available, or the Geos, at the third grade level, yet it's the third graders who are the most impacted by COVID because they were in kindergarten. So, you know, we, we, if I can, need to at least start trying to supplement there, too. Um, thank you. So the next slide, we just kind of go through some of the things that we've had for several years. Uh we continue with Journeys twenty seventeen, the publication, publication date is twenty seventeen. It's a core resource for our English Language Arts at the K, at the one-four level. It provides a robust language arts curriculum that meets the Common Core standards, as well as provide the comprehensive program um for each student. Student data indicates that the program hasn't been effective, and it is important to note that the new release of Journeys, which is called Into Reading, you know, they're all gonna start rolling out all sorts of new publications every five years or so, that we will be implementing next year in kindergarten. Um they have been kind of in a weird space with not, they've been in a weird space. So they'll, they'll, we're gonna be adopting Into Reading for them next year, which is on the state-approved list. There are only six curricula on the state-approved list, and that is one of them. Um so that's important to note, that that is approved by the state. Um at the six, fifth, five, six, seven, we have um our very popular wit and wisdom novel-based, novel-based reading. And this is uh really great because it prepares our kids for high school, because obviously in high school, they're primarily reading novels. It's a, obviously, any kind of language arts class that they're doing is novel-based. Um and this is novel-based but scaffolded. So it teaches the children very discreetly how to build a written response. First, you use it, you do that, and then they kind of slowly fold that back. And it's also a now, again, kind of like the Geos and Flyleaf, it's a knowledge-building resource. If you've listened to Natalie Wexler, read Natalie Wexler, The Knowledge Gap, we are graduating kids, not these two that were apparently here, um that have a, a gap in actual knowledge because everything's at their fingertips. They can Google it. You can Google, get the answer to this, or whatever. But we need kids to have a knowledge base. Um and E D Hirsch would say that we need cultural literacy. So this program provides that. Seventh grade, we finished the book Code Talker, if you're familiar with that, about the Navajo and how they were used during World War Two. The kids love learning this. And it's still in service of language arts, but also teaching all those important social studies themes. Um so that has been really great, and we will be implementing it next year in eighth grade. So then we'll have nice continuity, five through eight, um which I'm thrilled, thrilled to see. Um I already kind of spoke about Spire, but if you want some more information about it, again, use for our kids that are struggling. Uh and it's been a great program, and it really does follow that structured literacy approach. And so I won't spend too much time on that one. Thanks. And then, you know, to kind of address uh this mega words we've kind of dabbled with, I'll be honest, we've been in and out with this, but I included the slide. Um and because this gets into the morphology of words, and we know that vocabulary is such an important part of reading understanding. If you can't understand the meanings of the words, obviously, it impacts your reading comprehension. But also, we need to have kids that can understand oral language vocabulary. If you can't understand a word that's being said to you, you're not going to be able to understand it when you're reading. Um we have to remember, we are hardwired for speech. We are not hardwired to read. So we have to systematically teach all of that. Our brains are not wired for that. Reading is a relatively recent development. If you think about, you know, you mean uh the course of hu- humanity and uh but not language. Language has been around far longer. So mega words kind of ties into that, is that met multisensory approach to teaching vocab and embedding it within real text. Um and we've been using it with the fifth graders. But again, kind of, um we, we're, we're in an interesting place with fifth grade because we, because of a different scheduling thing. So it's, it's been in and out this year, to be honest with you. Um at the high school level, I think you may know, um we have really worked very diligently to include responsive multicultural texts. Things like Born a Crime, All American Boys, The Hate U Give, Last Castle, Into the Wild, The Nickel Boys. We certainly do read the American Canon and the British Canon, and of course, Mockingbird, Greasible, all those other great works are certainly included as well. But we have been working hard to bring in some more recent texts that cover many of the same themes. Um because certainly we want kids to be critical thinkers. And to become a critical thinker, you have to be presented with some literature sometimes that makes it a little uncomfortable, too. And and to face those uh the, the uh central themes of those types of books. Um so this, and our teachers at the high school level have been working very diligently or in the curriculum writing and updating and make sure that we're staying current and that we have everything that we need, particularly, you know, to, when we have our AP, that AP classes that we have, that we have the most rigorous AP and requirements that we can have, and that the teachers are trained um on how to teach AP. Um so looking ahead in ELA, uh we are always, as a district, we're always trying to be culturally responsive. And to speak more to that, some of you may know our English learner population has grown quite exponentially over the last three years, I, I would say. Uh maybe three years ago, we had maybe fifteen kids across the district. We now have over fifty. So in a very short amount of time, we have, that population has grown substantially. Um and it, it looks like it will continue on pace with that growth. Um the new kindergarten registration already indicates probably about five kids that speak another language, and that's only out of the ones that, you know, that have registered so far. Um so that's great. It's great to become more diverse. That's, that's a wonderful gift. Um so we have to make sure that we're honoring all these other cultures and make sure that we offer representation of characters that might resemble from, from other cultures. So we always are trying to be culturally responsive. Um we're always working on curriculum alignment, and Dr. Willett has been great about making sure that we can continue that work, as it's so very important. We talked about the understanding by design, and always with that portrait of a graduate. How can we bring that portrait of a graduate work down, and how can, what does it look like at TMS, TIS, Burge Grove? Because it really is, it's gotta be a, a full twelve-year, yeah, commitment to that. Um I think there's one more slide that I included. And I love this infographic. It's called The Ladder of Reading. And um this one speaks to the importance of teaching explicitly and systematically, particularly those foundational reading skills. Research suggests that thirty-five to forty percent of students will learn to read relatively easily without much intervention or without, they just kind of pick it up. And if you ask a young child, how did you learn to read? Many of them just say, I just, I just learned. I don't know. You know, I don't, I just looked at the words and I could figure it out. They don't, you know, they just, some kids can intuit it. Now aren't they lucky? Um and even effortlessly uh with, with broad instruction. But the majority of students require explicit systematic instruction to learn how to read. And in thinking about all of that and all that we've discussed, and then you put the lens of COVID on top of it and impacts of COVID over the last several years, we really recognize that we have to be very systematic in our education. Um and at, I think as you can see, we strive to follow the research around reading acquisition and how that occurs. Um and we try to prepare our students to be readers as, as quickly, if you will, on grade level, as quickly as we can, as we can. You know, if you, if you're still struggling by the end of third grade, research would say that the die is cast. Uh so we, we try to make sure that that doesn't happen. Um so I think this is, this infographic kind of speaks to the importance of that explicit instruction because most of us were explicitly taught. That's how our brains learn. Uh so I think that's an important little info infographic to, to end with. Um and I, you know, I, I hope you know that I really do take um the role of literacy. I hope my passion comes through, and I really do take it very, very seriously. So I do know how important this, this job is and how important it is to get our kids to where they need to be. So thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Absolutely. No, you know, once again, thank you for the rounds that Jen and I got to visit because we did see Code Talking in the seventh grade class. And we also did see a wonderful sixth grader in the Stratos class that, you know, just happens to be my daughter's. But, you know, it was really great to see it in action and actually see the kids dive deep into the books and how it's presented in the classroom. So like you said, I mean, this was some of the stuff that you went over with us on that day, but, you know, thank you very much for everything.
Sure, my pleasure.
Um go ahead.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation, and I love all the, the reading and making sure the kids are where they need to be. Um one thing I'm just curious about, what are we doing at the high school as far as writing? Yes, so you, you, I bring this up every year. I think, I, I'm noticing more and more, even with my own children, writing an email to a professor, writing an email to a colleague. You know, as they get older, you know, I couldn't help but notice the slide that had the books. And I, the first thing that jumped out at me was the book title with the U.
Oh, yeah.
And I said, eh, they can't write like that in the real world. So what are we doing for our high schoolers to make sure that when they exit high school, they know how to write more of an appropriate email? And just then also, I would say, if they're going to college, that they're prepared to write an academic paper or a research paper.
Yeah, all of the high school English classes do have the students writing. They all do. Um I am fortunate enough to be in all of their Google classrooms, so I can go in and see what's happening. You know what I mean by that? Like, I can just look at them all. Um so it's certainly taught as response to literature. Uh we also do have a writing course this year um that I believe, yes, Jamie Deguier, who moved up from eighth grade, taught. Um and so we do have that happening. I also talked to Shelley Manning, because I know we had talked in the past about this. And she assured me, and Amy Gredinsky, um the department chair for ELA, they partner to try to offer writing opportunities that cross, that have cross-curricular ties. You know, the Harlem Renaissance, they study that in Shelley's class, and what can we do, what can we offer in ELA that would give a cross-curricular tie? Um so certainly, they are trying to meet all of those needs. And because we did talk about it again, because I also asked about APA versus MLA. Um because we use MLA at the high school, yet I find that a lot of the colleges are APA. Um and so we had kind of had this little back and forth and, you know, which is ridiculous, but we did about, should we be doing MLA or APA? Um I, I think we should be doing APA. However, they assure me, and one of them, one of my high school um English teachers, her sibling, her sisters all teach at the college level. So she asked them, and they said, no, if you're English, it's MLA. So um, you know, so we do have these conversations. Um and writing, it's funny you bring it up because earlier today, I was having a conversation, not at the high school level, about writing and how we're, we're kind of in a state of flux with it at the other grades as well, because we had writer's workshop, which is workshop is, they're both in now, uh you know, anywhere with the state. I mean, they really do not want anybody doing it. Um so we're trying to make sure that we're doing writing and it, we're using the embedded writing within journeys, because then it's all connected. Which to me makes sense, you know, we can make everything connected. Um but we have to make sure that we're, we're all we're all there and we're all doing it. But I thank you, and I, I know that
I know this is one of my things. Like I said, email writing, I feel like has become such an important thing when the kids, because they're used to writing texts, and they have to get out of that habit.
Yeah, well, if it's any constantly, I did just get an email from a student at the high school, and it was beautifully written.
Yeah, because Billy Burns, I have a question. Why is there no U for what?
Beautifully written. He didn't, I answered, he didn't reply, but I think that's just because there was probably nothing further to say.
Well, thank you.
Sure, sure.
Hi, Barbara.
Hey, Jen.
Thanks. I just want to thank you for just an amazing presentation. Um what I thought was really so great about it was that, both as a board member and as a parent, but we, I've seen so many of the things that you talked about in action. Um Ashley already discussed the TMS rounds we did with you, but Toni and I also did the rounds with you at Burge Grove. And those were just fantastic. I mean, um to see Foundations in the three different classrooms and the three different grades was, it, it was great. And done so well in different ways by each teacher. And really, you were able to see the growth from kindergarten to first to second grade. Um and you provided us so much information, you know, before, constant notes during, while we were in the classroom and afterwards. Um and then, you know, my son, he did Foundations in um TIS. I, I think he, he started with it there. And um even in PTO, I remember it being discussed in the meetings and the teachers being so excited about this program when they would discuss it with us. Um and then even, you know, you talked about the um, the text in the high school. My son read Nickel Boys um last year. I worked on a writing assignment with him, and so I read pieces of it. It was very impactful. Um so it's just, it's, I could talk about a lot of other little things, but it's just great to really see what you're talking about in action. And then just, you know, just to back up some of the things you and Dr. Willett said, you truly do have such a passion um for reading, and I've seen that for, for so long and with you as a principal. And the way, the passion that you just um gave us in this presentation is what I've seen you um at, when I've seen you working with both teachers and students. And you even, Barbara even came in last year um into my son was between teachers in sixth grade for reading, and you, you came in, you were assisting with teaching reading at that time with him. And you were actually there for Parents' Night, and I had questions and about my son, and you were able to answer them. So um definitely, we're very lucky to have you, and just thank you for everything that you're doing. I, I find it really exciting.
Thank you, Jen. That's very sweet. Thank you. Any other questions, Kevin?
Thank you. Happy if you want anymore. Well, can you want me to stay or?
Oh, no, you are.
Don't worry, we only have a lot of people on us.
So um we do, do, we do review the portal in the curriculum, Senate Curriculum Committee. But as a matter of practice, um periodically, we do put the portal in the data that's in the portal in front of the board of that. Just, I think we've decided to do that every, every six months or so. Um so that we are, A, making sure people are aware of where the form is, and B, you know, discussing the data that's within it. Um you're probably aware that right now we are undergoing the Sback testing as well as MGSAs testing. We've also been randomly selected for Nave testing, which I'm fascinated by. We seem to be randomly selected. But the name testing is a federal test, and it's, it usually is a subsection. And I'll, as soon as we have any, any more information about that, I'll let you know. But that's not something I'll have immediately. Um that, that does come around once in a while, and when I do get any kind of results from that, I'll post that, too. We generally do pretty well on that, especially uh because that's a nationwide test, and we, you know, we do a lot better than a lot of other states in general. So just as a matter of reminder, this is up for everyone. The public can see it. It's a, on the superintendent's page. You can get to it by scrolling down on the left side. It is the data portal. And every time I get a new set of data, I put it up on the data portal. And every time I get a new set of data, I put it up on the data portal as soon as I have the Sback data that um, when we get the results, I'll put it up here. I am pleased to say that in the cursory views, they've they've increased and made the technology better on Sback tracking. So now we can actually take, it's not perfect because you still don't have all the results, but it and I and I won't know for sure until we actually get the the actually endorsed results from the state of Connecticut because they embargoed that. We have to wait until it's actually officially reviewed. But um, the trend that I'm about to show you that we've been going through as a district is showing up on the Sback data that I'm getting back so far. We we've been doing what's called interim assessment blocks and IABs. Um, those have been preparing the kids extremely well and we're seeing significant, significant increases and advantages from doing that. So that started back, you know, we tried, we were starting that prior to COVID. COVID hit us and there was no testing in the mass, not a lot of people actually took the test for a couple of years. Uh, now we've got our testing participation generally back up. Um, and we're noticing some really great stuff. So I'm hoping to be able to show that as soon as that is officially released, I think we'd be really happy with it. I know I'm happy. Uh, one thing that we do struggle with is there are a lot of people in town that opt out. There are a lot of opt outs. Um, so we may not hit the ninety-five percent participation rate and if we don't, we get dinged. So what happens on, we do pretty well um, on our scores overall, but when you have a thing called the accountability matrix, what it does is it includes things like uh, participation rates and it'll include things like chronic absenteeism and things like that. Um, so for our participation rates, we really don't, we are, we we do have some struggles with participation and we're getting more opt outs every year. Every year we have the test, more people coming up there. So where that dings us is we get a ding on our accountability matrix and the accountability score goes down. But our overall scores will generally be going up and I think I can say that despite what I've seen so far. They're going even, some of our scores this year, projecting it, I don't have the final ones yet, but they are actually better than our scores pre-COVID. Um, so the supervisor doing a great job, teachers doing a great job, IABs are being implemented in classrooms. Um, you know, for math and ELA and those core subjects, we're seeing some great stuff and I think we're gonna see some great outcomes from that. And that's what it looks like is happening right now. So. Um, with this portal, uh, the most recent data that I have, um, I put up for ELA and math and for, you know, that type of thing. And I don't just put up the standardized testing scores. I put up the kind of scores that that Barb was speaking on. So in this case, you know, the, we have DIBL's tests or dynamic indicators of basic literacy skills. They're one of the most important kind of testing canaries in the mind for performance about how our kids are doing. They also are a pretty good predictor of what's going to happen on some of those standardized measures. So we, if you were to look at these historically, when you go back, because I did put more years here. Um, we were in a much, you know, much tougher place, especially pre-COVID, you know, uh, there was a lot more yellows and reds uh, to make it kind of succinct here rather than kind of going on and on. But as you kind of scrolled through time, you can see when I started the portal to kind of where we are now. Um, the performance has gotten better and better. And now at the beginning of the year, you did have some yellows and a red, you know, some light yellows here. This is the mid-year yellow. This is the beginning of our year when we took our first snapshot. This is our mid-year assessments. You can see almost all of them are in the green zone, which means they're performing at like a three or four or higher level. Um, and that'll manifest itself on the Sback scores too. And so I am seeing that. It's it's really, really great to see. Uh, but that was our canary in the mine. We don't have a um, an end of year assessment yet, but when I do, I'll add a third set here that will indicate, you know, that will be the end of your column in this side. And you can see that the red range is intensive support needed, you know, that type of thing. Yellow range is that we have strategic support, probably like a tier two. Um, green range is they're doing great, doing well. Um, and so and this, this is not meaning they're in yellow. These are just, these are the, this is a different column. But this is what we're looking at here for color code. This is what we're looking at for color. So, um, you know, we continue to make really great progression. You know, the programs that Barb was talking about are kind of like having a toolbox. You can build a box if you have a screwdriver, a hammer and a few nails, but if you have a full toolbox of things, you can address all of the problematic needs the kids have. And it manifests itself in a much stronger structure, a much, much more uh, extensive and supportive program that, you know, results in much better student performance. And that's been what's happening over the period of years here is really building up that program and support so that each developmental level there's consistency, it ties to other programs and it, you know, and it provides real tangible results. So ELA is doing great, you know, and um, we're seeing that and seeing great results. And I do think we're going to get ding on accountability because of our participation rates, but I'll talk.
Can I just ask, why do you think people are opting out?
Well, I think it's just a general malaise about standardized testing in general. Like, for instance, you know, I don't want to like add fuel to the fire, but people don't see the value. Why should my child sit through X? The reason is it does affect our town and district if they don't and you know, and it's a, it's a snapshot in time of how overall the district is doing. The argument would be that it's not progress monitoring, so it has no benefit to my child in that classroom. And I don't want my child to do it. And, you know, and we would say, well, but it does show us how we're doing overall and compared to other districts and it has not to do that way and grant funding can we connect, you know, try to make the part. So it's it's tough though, that, you know, people that believe that it's a not a good use of their child's time, uh, they're very strong in that. So, you know, um, so that's a, that's a part of the picture. Um, however, um, despite that, you know, these are great. When you look at math results, same thing. Um, you know, this is referred to as more fluency, math fluency. Um, you know, average scores have special ed worked into it, but you can see for SATs, you know, we're among the highest in the dirt for that. I believe that this year's results would be the same for that, our official SAT performance. Um, when you look at math fluency data, and again, what I do is I try to give snapshots of um, different data sets from things throughout the district. So you're not only seeing just what would normally be published, you're seeing what the teachers work with and what we work with our data teams. This was a beginning of the year uh, assessment, you know, coming out of COVID. Uh, you can see how from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, um, with this data. And again, I have historical data, you can go all the way back and see some of these other pieces here, but you can see from the beginning to the end, you see a shift from the number of kids in the red zone when they came in in the elementary side. And you watch it go from end of year to the end of last year, that a lot more were moving over to green. And then I don't have the most recent results, but when I do, I'll be publishing them. Um, we we can really see a shift now for even higher performance. Um, and I'll show you some of the Sbacks up from last year because we don't have this year's yet. But, you know, we we increased the scores in Sback across every grade but eighth grade. And then we were exploring what happened in eighth grade and now this year it looks like eighth grade has improved dramatically as well. Um, and that was as we made our shift to the Bridges program and we did that with high fidelity. We did all kinds of extensive curriculum work and training on it. Um, it had really good benefits. We have these look for documents, these, you know, we made them part of uh, what we call our um, whole building goals and our peer feedback where teachers are giving each other feedback on the map, the map walls, word walls. So it's had a really good result from the standpoint of this year's data, when you start to look at it, um, you know, how it's making a big difference. Uh, and it's improving those scores too. So I'll give you a, um, I can't wait to put up the Sback stuff because it's just, it's looking so great right now. I wish I could push it all out here, but it's not finalized yet and it has to be, uh, you know, has to get a stamp of approval from the state. Now, when I talk about, um, you know, well, there's standardized testing again, this is last year's, you can see from the the year from pandemic, here's the pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. You can see how we got heavily impacted by the pandemic. Um, and then you can see that in twenty-one, twenty-two, the IABs and things like that started to have a positive effect again, where we were going from. Going from the fifty-eight to the seventy and the fifty-four to the seventy-one and the thirty-six to the fifty-four, you know, we saw us pulling ourselves out of COVID um, in this year. And then, you know, the eighth grade was was uh, kind of a concern for us, but all the other grades had gone up and our SATs were strong. So basically it was K through seven going upwards and our SAT is very strong in the eighth grade. So we looked at that, I think we found you know, what we needed to do. And and the newest scores that will come out this season, I I I think you're going to see that the that has increased dramatically, uh, in an extremely good direction for us. So, you know, this was pre-COVID, you know, during the midst to right out of COVID, um, you know, and then post-COVID as we came out of it. And we're not, you know, we weren't really post-COVID in this year. We still have a lot of kids that, you know, hadn't shown up for school. This kind of ties into the absenteeism issue. Um, at K two right now, we had a hundred and eighty kids who were more than ten to fifteen days absent and more than almost forty kids that would be on thirty days absent. And so we have a lot of work to do with respect to kind of getting everybody back on board with showing up. So you can imagine that if you have that many kids who have missed thirty days of school at certain levels, it does impact what, you know, how they're doing in general. Um, and so, you know, the things that we get a little bit dinged on are participation rates. We also get a little dinged on the absences. And so last year during accountability, one of the things that we are still in the top third on our accountability scores for our dirt, we're still up in that top ten. But we could have been in top five if it weren't for the passing since we have. So we are addressing that. We have a program we're starting next year. We have a special committee put together to address it. We've already, um, you know, done many visits, many home visits, many um, different actions that we hope are helping. Uh, at the same time, absenteeism has been going up for us and other places. The 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 state government has taken away the supports that it used to provide in addressing. So we used to have programs we could refer the kids to and the families to that no longer exist. So we have to create those programs in our own district and that's one of my major objectives for next year as an initiative is creating internal, uh, these internal committees. I was, I'm going to probably create an office of attendance and truancy in my central office and pull staff in to be members of the office of attendance and truancy. Um, so that we can do a major focus on helping families, um, you know, uh, get back to an attendance level that's beneficial for kids. And it's all about support. It's not anything punitive. It's mainly just looking to provide as much support as we can to get the, you know, hundred and eighty families that that have ten, you know, fifteen absences to 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 maybe work and have fewer of those kinds of things. So we can get them in school again, you know, more often, missing less content. So the accountability uh, matrix is. So for us, for the most recent results, you can see that we, you know, compared to the dirt, uh, we're still in the top third here. Um, but we probably would have been, you know, right maybe in this area if we hadn't had so many absences. Our absentee rate was in the, you know, fifteen to twenty-eight percent in pre-K two level. That really, that really knocked us down. And when, you know, when you look at it, it's really a certain uh, it's a certain couple of grades that are really doing that pre-K two. So I think next year we're going to be way up. Well, we're going to be higher next year. We'll be even higher in the top ten. But um, in another year after that, two and three years, once we start getting the chronic absenteeism under control, I can see us being kind of where we are in the SAT zone. Um, we'd probably be in the top five if we, if we get that under control. So we're in the top ten now. We'll probably be in the top eight next time, you know, probably be in the top five after that. And you'll notice that our our scores are going to actually be great as they come out of the pandemic this year. I think we're going to have really strong performance. But we're going to have great performance in some test numbers. We're going to have not so great in attendance and those two things together on accountability are going to knock us down a little bit. Uh, I don't completely understand the 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 absence stuff. We're we're going through to find out what's driving it. We're trying our best to address it. Oh, there's one other thing. I do put, I did put up here the most recent high school information. Um, and so periodically I would give you a heads up on this. This is our profile. So it does talk about, you know, aspects of what our graduation requirements are. Um, you know, how we assess rank, our assessments, our schedules. COVID's a resurgence and a little bit of it. And then I do usually share this with the board. I just made it part of this document this year or it's incorporated into this document, so I just shared this instead. Um, these are our college acceptances for twenty twenty-two. So if you're wondering where our kids are going last year, this is it. We compiled this list, you know, somewhere a few months into the following year. So this is, this information's been up a while, but just in case you were wondering, you know, where they go. I used to post this on the website. Now I post it in in the accountability or I post it in the data.
The first couple pages are what gets sent to colleges, correct?
Yeah.
The profile.
Yeah.
I think I.
And posted elsewhere too, yeah.
Could you go back up just for a second? I thought when I saw this way back when I had a question on to the class option.
By the way, while you're thinking of it, one of the things that we get dinged on, when you see US News and World Report, they don't count stuff like Yukon ECE. So Yukon ECE is one of the most helpful things to parents. Those of you who have your, had your kids do this, I've had to pay for a lot less at Yukon than I would have had to pay otherwise because my child took Yukon classes in high school. Right? That gives you a really great advantage as a, as a Connecticut parent. But when you go to those, you know, certain measure, you know, certain corporations that do this, they have relationships with the with the AP and college board. So they won't give you credit for things like ECEs, but if you run an ECE, you're not always running an AP. The ECE helps the local parents better, but the AP will get you the credit on those national newspaper, you know, newspapery type things. So we try to have a balance. We'll never be super high on like uh, US News and World Report because we don't just go all APs. But we we do things that I think are in our own parent and guardian family's best interest, which is things like the ECE. So it's stuff like that, that sometimes you can, you know, at the corporations, you're, if you're doing the right thing by them and you're you know, picking their products, they have relationships with each other, you're you're going to do a little better. It's not, it's always best for your kids or your parents.
Did you figure out?
I I think it was just, this is probably more for Jacob. Are we ever going to consider having an AP US World History, US History class?
Oh, instead of Congress.
Yeah. I I, that that's why I I have a friend who happens to be a high school history teacher in New York and she was absolutely floored that we don't have an AP.
Yeah.
AP push, I guess that's what they call it for sure.
It's an interesting question. I think we've talked a little bit about AP credit that's been a while, but
Yeah.
Um, there are, there's certain, like it, it's not like you can just opt into one.
Yeah.
AP credit, like it's a little bit more complicated than that.
Yeah, there's training, there's curriculum, you have to pay, uh, to send them up, you have to do some things. And I think traditionally here, I could never problem having an AP push. I think, um, for me, I like social studies in general. I'd like to see a number of things happen in this district with respect to that.
Yeah.
Um, so that could be in the horizon. I think it's just, they do it on the number of requests they have and things. And I think there's been more psych stuff that many kids have wanted and.
Really?
Yeah, but for me, I I think it was great.
Yeah.
So that would be something, you know, I think I could make out.
Yeah.
But, um.
Uh, we we have, right, an AP camp. Is that just, we don't, did we not have it for the class of twenty twenty-three?
Um, well, I I don't, I'd have to look.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, to go back and find whether it's uh, when they offer it, sometimes they might offer it in a rotating.
I know we had, we used to have you, the Yukon camp, but I know Mr. Spontane retired. I thought it got moved down to AP camp.
Yeah, I can get a full list of all the AP courses to everyone. If you want to look at that.
Sure.
Right here. Um, but just one point though, Yukon versus AP, that that was interesting. Um, and Dr. Willett, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember we used to have Yukon physics. Now we don't, but we have AP physics. And I think part of the reason was it was actually harder to get qualified to have a Yukon ECE class.
In some cases.
And yeah, I I don't know, just it made me think a little bit because I think that AP seems to be more widely accepted if you take the test, that is, you can
Yes.
Get it into it, you know, more colleges will take it. And it also might be a little bit easier to qualify a teacher for.
Well, there's, you have to pay to send them training to do it. And and.
It's.
It depends because in AP you have a certain score. Some schools will take, you know, a three, but others will require higher than that. No, uh. It's, it's, it's best to have, in my opinion, a combination of. And then you just decide what your mix is because I, I know a lot of parents have benefited from their kids starting as like a sophomore.
It's definitely very.
And that is one of the things you can do here, especially with our thirty-two credit, you know, so, you know, semesterized schedule. Even though there are some downsides to things, this, this is an advantage. The kids can take a lot more if they want to.
Yeah.
So, um, some of them have started as, as sophomores or even second semester stuff. Which, and that's, that's forty thou- forty-five thousand dollars, you know, the parents, they don't have to spend.
Yeah.
And if you look at a thirty grand year and a fifteen grand semester, it's just amazing. But, um, yeah, it's good to have a balance. And we do, sometimes if you don't have enough kids, you'll run something that you won't run the other one.
Conversation, but yeah, I agree though, you know. Long-term goal would be to have more AP courses. Uh, you're, I definitely know that sense of that because I know, it seems like most people I talk to and other, who went to other high schools do have an AP US history class.
Very popular.
Pretty common.
Yeah, we can talk about APs and I can go into the, the rabbit hole to find out like why specifically we have the ones we have versus.
Yeah.
These districts do have different ones that they offer, but generally based on interest, but I can find out.
Yeah. I will say, I think that the honors history class that do offer is very good, you know, even if it's not recognized at that level. It is a very good class, so definitely wanna think, no slight against it.
Yeah, definitely not.
Yeah. Um, I did have a question though, so back to the absenteeism issue, which I, is very concerning. You know, to see those high numbers, um, especially among the young population. You said we still aren't entirely clear about what's causing it. I think one thing I've heard from parents, you know, having brought up the issue with parents, this is just casual word on the street, but you know, they, a lot of the, the common question is, you know, kids are getting more sick because of, um, weakened immune systems. Does that kind of match up with what you're seeing with an aggregate data? Or do you think that that's probably more anecdotal? There's other things going on?
I, uh, you know, I, I think, um, uh, you know, I, I'm not a medic person, so I, I don't know. There's just, you know, more people getting sick. I, I think. I would say my, my gut is that, that, you know, the human, the humans, our, our resistance hasn't gotten so much weaker in this short span of time than it used to be. I think it's probably that, um, people are sensitized to, um, not spreading illness. You know, I think there's been a kind of a, a movement to, to understand illness better on the part of some people. So I think they feel like, uh, they wanna keep their kids home for things that in the past they might have sent their kids to school with.
Take like more conservative approach.
Yeah, and maybe that's just a, uh, you know, understandably coming out of a time when there was so much, uh, yeah. You know, so, so strong feelings and so much communicated about the adverse effects of what was going on, that it got people thinking in that way. But, um, I think most of, you know, us prior to the pandemic and, and some of us now are kind of like, if you don't have a fever, you're going to school, you know? And I think to some extent, that is not the paradigm that everybody's using right now, you know? And, you know, I think that has affected attendance. I think people are home for things they didn't used to stay home for. So we're trying to work through that. Um, I also think that we're trying to work through just a cultural sense that, you know, I think there was a time and now I'm kind of going a little outside of, you know, uh, of the viral kind of paradigm, but you know, I think that we, we're probably gonna need to get the, the mindset back towards, um, you know, education and public education is a civic, a civic responsibility of everybody, you know, versus a salad bar. You know, I'll come today, but not this day, or, you know, we're gonna not do this, but we'll do this. Um, you know, I think there was generally a, a better and stronger commitment to just generally coming to school than, than there is now. And so I think what we have, you know, what we wanna do is do a, a promotional campaign about how attendance counts and attendance matters. That's not gonna be for the tier two and three groups. The tier two and three groups have serious challenges that they're going through that we would wanna help them with. But the tier one group, you know, that I think there's just a, a feeling that missing X days of school, like ten days or something, or fifteen or twenty, isn't a big deal, but from an educational perspective, it's quite, it does have a big impact on the kids, their acquisition of knowledge. It may not be, it may not be something that they, that people realize, but that's why the state of Connecticut is, you know, so serious about this because it's noted not just here, but in other places. This is a problem. So I think it has to do with people's perceptions of schooling post-COVID. That it's, you know, that it's not as much of a commitment to the traditional concept of school. And it probably has something to do with people being a little more sensitized to illness and not wanting to spread illness. And those two things together, I think they're coming together and people, keeping people home more than they would have otherwise done in the past. So I think we have to do a promotional campaign about how, uh, how, um, the adverse effects of missing even five, even ten days, you know, what that can do. Um, and, you know, kind of a, a, a promotional campaign about, hey, you know, we all, we are able to, to go to school with cold, you know, maybe not the fevers and throwing up if there's a level, but that is acceptable and, you know, we're prepared to, to deal with that. You know, and try to find a way to communicate to people that, you know, post-COVID, not everything is COVID. And, you know, if you have a fever or if you have a stomach virus, a throat virus or a norovirus, stay home because they shut schools down and work. But if you have a cold, it's okay. You know, you can come with a cold and I'm, I'm thinking people just haven't gotten back to that point.
Yeah, then I agree.
Just a few points. Based on, on my work that I do in Child Protection Arena, the lack of attendance is a statewide problem. And, um, and many of my cases that I have in, and I can't speak for our school district, but I, the DCF is filing neglect petitions, educational neglect petitions, it's super common. And the only neglect is just that they're not going to school. Um, and it's a problem because a lot of times the parents will then unenroll them, but then they're not ensuring that their educational needs are being met through a solid homeschooling program. So it's like a double edged sword because you don't wanna encourage families to disenroll because we don't have the insurance that they have the tools. But at the same time, they have the obligation, it's actually statutory obligation to send their children to school. And I have found with my clients, especially the ones that I receive that are the children that don't, I ask them, hey, go to school. A lot of it I have found is due to mental health. Like they just got used to not going during COVID and it's a lot easier to lay in bed and look at your device and it's, and then to have to face your peers and worry about what you're wearing and what, all of those social, and then the teacher, all of those social dynamics, I think they fell out of, of habit. A lot of kids, maybe even those kids that perhaps weren't comfortable in the first place, right? So I, I think it's, a lot of it has to do with mental health and, and just not making it a priority and making your child's comfort more of a priority, which obviously you can tell how I feel about that. But I can also say that the Yukon courses are extremely beneficial. Dr. Well, you are correct. Um, I can see from experience that our family has really benefited from that. But one interesting point is the grade you get on your Yukon classes. Yeah, we learn that the hard way.
Yeah, only on your Yukon, it transcript, not on your Ithaca College. That Yukon bio is a real.
Yeah.
Class and wow, it can be a real tanker.
Yeah, that is true. I think Miss Shake is right that there's, there's a hope component, you know.
Yeah.
It has, it was sort of just, it is a myriad of things together that make for a, uh, kind of a storm, a maelstrom for us to work. We're gonna get and we're gonna turn that, but, um, I think families need a lot of support, which is why I wanna have a special office dedicated to reaching out to families, make sure we're connecting and providing them the supports and mental health supports to get kids to, to engage, you know, and that, and the much engage more often so that they're not missing out on some school.
Yeah, I just wanna build off what Sophia just said, I think perfectly. Um, a lot of it. I live with it, you know, I have a sibling who has been dealing with this all school year. Um, and part of it, how I'm interpreting it, just from what I, what I see and what I witness and what we discuss, it is that mental health aspect of it, but it, it, I think, again, I think part of, so perfect thing was just you get so used to one way of things, you know, in the age in which you're matured. Uh, you know, that especially that sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade age, when you're getting in your routine and all of a sudden that routine is once again grown to shrinks. Um, by getting back to nor- what I'm gonna call normalcy, you know, going into school five days a week, you're going out of school five days a week. Uh, so there's that aspect of it as well, as well as, you know, there's a comfort aspect as well as a, you know, some, some, some students, especially in our LGBTQ plus community, um, it's a safety aspect as well. And, uh, you know, not all of them on any given day, um, may feel safe to go to school. You know, maybe it's for that first class today because there's this person in that class and whatever, whatever it may be. Um, it is worth, I don't know if there's any, anything going on at the state level, um, to sort of further look into it. But, you know, I work at shared office with, um, I don't know what the role is. He works with attendance and then, and then solely attendance and there's so many kids, he's got about two hundred and fifty kids on his docket alone. He's not the only person that does that job. Um, and so, I mean, it is definitely statewide.
Yeah.
And so Talon can somehow sort of, you know, leave the tri- I don't know what it is, um, but get some sort of focus on this issue, whether that's in curriculum, whether that's in whatever. Um, I think we're only helping these kids and, and long-term that's beneficial for them as well.
Like one of our challenges is we don't qualify for certain grants and things that, that certain other districts might qualify for as of certain, and we're not big enough. You know, so, you know, I, me establishing an office of attendance truancy, you know, it's gonna be giving people duties beyond the duties they have to be in the roles of attendance truancy. You decide, you can't hire an attendance truancy. So we can't usually, you know, it's not gonna be a parent coordinator or community coordinator officer. Some places will hire officers for this type of thing, you know, and we're just not big enough to do that. So we're shifting up job roles to, to create this, this, um, office of attendance truancy and, and sat committee structures and so on. So we've already started that. Um, we're already starting to address it. We've already got some great ideas and initiatives. Um, I think they're gonna show some, some real benefits in the next couple of years, but part of it's been trying to understand the problem and really, you know, provide real solutions to the mental health and other challenges that families are facing. They can't always help themselves, but there's a lot of things going on. So, um, so that's the other thing is we, we aren't in a space where we're gonna be a priority district. But we have a lot of other things going our way to work with what we have. That's what we're doing.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you everybody. And let's move on to, um,
Sure, uh, we have policy today, uh, earlier today at three o'clock, as a matter of fact. When we covered, uh, policy four zero nine zero, which is reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children. There was significant changes and, and updates that were made. Primarily focused around the unfortunate, you know, incidents of, of today, just nationally and uh, different types of abuses and stuff, some of the things that unfortunately have to be spelled out and really written in the ground. So we got through that, um, and, and I think with some minor edits, I mean, that it's been moved up to the point available for you guys when you're doing it in the planning. Uh, we had a second item on the agenda, uh, but we opted to table that. So that will be on our, our next meeting, uh, along with the diversity policy that we've been running.
So we had a layer agenda, uh, earlier today for curriculum. Um, two big things where we, we did a little review of our lead program. Um, just kind of to check in on and refresh our memories, given that, um, special ed is big, big emphasis, especially right now. Um, but it was just a general discussion, nothing, nothing to bring forward. Additionally, we talked a bit about the new teacher evaluations, again, more of a, just a general discussion. Um, you know, recently we improved the extension of the flexibilities. Um, I guess the big news there is we still don't really know when the state is going to provide permanent evaluation standards that are new. Uh, I think Dr. Well said, they were supposed to do it six months ago and still haven't been waiting. So, um, it's TBD, but it's a, it's a big issue, um, that we wanna keep an eye on. So yeah, the discussion about it. Yeah.
Uh, so we went through, um, kind of our six month check-in on, um, the updates on all of our facilities and through all of our schools. We talked a little bit about, um, capital projects that are coming up this summer. We'll take a more in-depth look at the capital budget, um, over the summer. We looked at, um, the new numbers after the budget referendum um, in the appendix app, which is the more detailed ones. And then we looked at the, um, detailed numbers for April thirtieth, which are pretty much kind of status quo, not much changes for March as we're still kind of in a spending freeze, but we're still waiting for, hopefully we got the, um, other excess cost grant this week or it should be like any day.
It should be any day, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Jenny, wanna do updates on, well, on communications and advocacy, advocacy negotiations?
Uh, for negotiations, we're still in process with the paras right now. Uh, for communications, we discussed the final draft, the legislative letter. Um, it's gonna be brought to agenda planning for a possible first read at the six-ten BOE meeting. And then we discussed, um, beginning quarterly workshops, um, in the future on topics related to education and student welfare, um, such as social emotional, social emotional learning, relational aggression, bullying and, um, LGBTQIA+. And we also discussed, um, possibly some future communication efforts, um, regarding substance abuse in our adult and student population. And that was about it.
To report, let's go to board action. So if we could, um, walk us through this fifty-four oh two.
Right, so meal charging policy. Uh, basically, you, you're probably aware that the, and this, this was something that went to subcommittee before it came here. Um, so some of the information is up through April. And generally we, we continue to make some headway. The state of Connecticut provided free lunches, then it didn't provide free lunches, then it provided free lunches. And we don't know what's gonna happen next, but what happens when it does stuff like that is, um, naturally people get confused and, um, now if you couple that with, uh, there's a new law that, uh, that rightfully so, you know, wants to protect children from, you know, feeling shamed. And, you know, so I think generally in the past, uh, the intention wasn't to shame anyone, but if somebody did not remember a lunch, the school would provide, um, so it would provide a granola bar cheese sandwich, you know, something like that, yeah, no cost, that type of thing. But, uh, there was a feeling in the state legislature and certainly I think everybody can, you know, emphasize we don't wanna have kids feel uh, humiliated that doing so humiliated children, made them feel like, you know, it was clear that they didn't have money or couldn't afford the lunches and so on. Now, there's a free and reduced lunch, free and reduced lunch program that, um, community members can apply for and get granted. And that does give free lunches to kids or reduced lunches to kids. So kids in those programs would come up and get the free lunch anyway. They would not get a granola bar or whatever. Uh, but some families would be on the cusp of that, wouldn't qualify, but still be struggling. And so that was really what the feeling was, is that a lot of families still aren't qualifying for that, but are in great need. COVID exacerbated that feeling. And so you have the free lunches and things that nature happens. Uh, when they go on and then they come off and go on again, what happens is people have, um, they have accrued balances that when they, they weren't free, they thought they were free or they, they were not, um, you know, looking at that info and, um, and because the kids could not be given a granola bar, they would be given a lunch. When they come up, you present them a lunch. You can't say to them, oh, honey, your mom forgot her money or that you don't have any money. You can't say to them, oh, honey, your mom or dad have no money, or that you don't have any money, uh, in your account. Those things can't be stated, you just have to give them lunch. Um, and I'm not saying that they should be stated, it's just in the past, as we all know, when I went to school, I didn't have money, they'd say, you know, you don't have money in your account, the appointment in your account type of thing. The, those kinds of comments will not be made now, the children will just be given a lunch each time. So, uh, they won't necessarily be telling their parents that, you know, they, that there's a need for this because they don't know, because they're getting lunch anyway, so you can see how it gets tough. So we did have balances that were in the two thousands, um, we did do a lot of information sharing and put a lot of info out there. Districts by the state of Connecticut were, were told to set up, and I'm gonna shorten the whole thing by just saying a collections kind of system. And so we reach out to families. We still, you know, need to have that collection system. The feeling is that this is going to be, um, maybe not part of the legislation. Who knows? If it's not, then next year, um, we'll be in a situation where kids may be coming up, getting that lunch, um, and you know, generating a deficit, and the parents may not realize how big of a deficit it's getting and, you know, so we're communicating regularly what's owed to the district and trying to do it in a very respectful and compassionate way. Um, so, you know, because you can't make the child aware of it now, it's really on the districts to make sure the parents are made aware of it even more than we've done in the past. And we've, you know, done significant efforts in the past to make sure people are aware. But now, you know, we will have to send more messages, more communications, um, you know, and, and keep the individuals who maybe owe more and more, you know, kind of find special ways of reaching out to them to make sure the district can recoup the funds, because you know, you don't wanna be losing money as a district owner, it's either you wanna break even like we have in the past. So the policy itself just goes into explaining, you know, what our situation is, that we use an automated prepayment system, that a parent guardian, um, you know, can request that they're, you know, charge meals, but then it also goes into the fact that we can't, we can't say no to them. It makes hopefully parents aware of, you know, what the dynamics are, lets them know what our school account system is, it explains what we do for collections. Um, it explains kind of what delinquent is and what we consider delinquent and how we try to handle that, it's a school district. Um, and ultimately, this was recommended by Shipman and Goodwin, that we do a policy that makes it clear how we're handling, uh, these situations. So this, this is why we are doing it, it is recommended by Shipman. We're explaining what processes we follow and codifying them in language, um, explaining that we do do collections and, um, we're explaining why. And then the, the legal, uh, references here explain where we're at, why with respect to, uh, the shaming law and so. So tonight, you know, this would be your first read of it.
So ethically, we're not actually.
These things tend to go into action in case you want it to, but this is really just.
You know, so this will be, um, the next agenda session. But any questions, Thomas? Okay, um. So, this one, yes.
We definitely chatted it up in policy.
Okay, well, um, seeing that we actually don't have any viewers either, um, in our public, so we can cross out the participation, because it's only Lisa, Jen, we, Voice Channel, Walter, Miss, so. Okay, so at this time, um, we can do a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation, inviting, um, Dr. Well in there.
Jacob, I'm ready to move to enter into executive session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation, inviting Dr. Well into the session.
And any discussion on this? Well, okay, um, we will just do a roll call vote, so we'll.
Hi.
Hi.
Jacob.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
I as well, therefore, we will enter into the executive session at nine oh seven. Okay, just for the notes, we exited at nine fifty-one in the executive session. So at this point, um, I will open up to any board members for points of information, if anybody has anything. Seeing none, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? So we will, um, adjourn.